All right, just let me know when we're back on. Twenty-nine hundred people have been watching.
How many?
Twenty-nine. All right, thank you all for, uh, holding tight with us there for a few minutes. Um, now what we're gonna kinda move on to is option C, um, the all-remote plan. How's it gonna look different than, uh, when we threw it together in forty-eight hours in March? Um, how, how can we make it more robust? How can my kindergartner, um, if he's, if he's, uh, expected to, to come in on this, this model, how is he expected to learn, um, what he needs to learn to be a kindergartner? Um, so I'll let you guys take it away again.
Sure. We recognize that if the board, um, ultimately decides to go with any option, there will be parents who don't want their children at school this year.
True.
So, we know option A's not a possibility right now, but option B does call for some in-person, um, um, instruction. And then option C, um, if you decide to go with that, we probably wouldn't be looking at a full year of that. We'd be looking at some shorter time period. Per the governor's directive, we want to offer every family the free assurance that they can be part of Henderson County Public Schools, remain part of the school that they already call their school community in a fully rea- remote option. And so it would be a concurrent model. They would still be in class with a certified teacher, a Henderson County teacher. Um, they would see peers from Henderson County virtually in class. Um, and should the board decide to go with, with Plan B, that will be ready for registration tomorrow. Mr. Fender and his staff have worked and, um, should you vote on Plan B, registration will be live on our website beginning tomorrow.
Okay. Change slides, here we go.
So when you look at the overview for Plan C, as you mentioned, so that, uh, middle slide that we just shared with you is the fully-remote option, Engage Remote Learning. Uh, this is the Plan C overview. Again, in short, uh, this slide captures what most of you are already very, very familiar with from the school closure period. What that would mean is that all staff are either onsite or working remotely, wherever that might be appropriate, practicing proper safety measures and guidelines. It would include, but not be limited to, the staff remaining in their classrooms. You heard Mrs. Case talk a lot about that piece of it in terms of creating an environment where they can provide as much support to students as possible. All instruction would be provided remotely. Um, and when you think about Plan C, I believe it's important to understand that you would be considering Plan C with like a fixed time period for this plan, with options for considerations and adjustments. I believe it was Ms. Holt's question about transitioning between plans. If you're thinking about this, this is not a permanent decision. It's not a fixed decision. There's no period at the end of it. It essentially would be a dot-dot-dot. We would be evaluating the health and safety of our community. We would be working collaboratively, as you heard Mr. Smith say, in terms of understanding what's happening in our community and then making decisions. And then, as Mr. Caldwell said, properly communicating to our community if we were shifting from this. Cause again, if the governor continues to allow the state to operate in Plan B or even eventually in Plan A, any option that the board selects, there's that fluidity to. So we'd be working through that and giving consideration to it. Uh, the next slide talks a little bit about what that schedule or the, the who might be. Again, and then we'll talk in more detail about how that's different from what has been happening. But students would be assigned to classroom teachers. They would be assigned to those classes with their peers, as you know it. They would attend remotely in a simultaneous environment with their peers for essentially what is our half-day online schedule. And so that would look a lot like our early dismissal schedule. And the afternoon would be designed for independent assignments. It would be independent support, small group instruction and otherwise. And Dr. King will talk a little bit more about that. To Mr. Absher's question earlier, under Plan C, you still have daily attendance and student grading expectations. They would look very similar to in-person instruction. And of course, the critical nature of that is how this is different than the end of last year is. This is new content, new teachers, new instruction. Um, and you're working toward course completion. When we closed in March, many, many people were, were kind of in that midpoint of a semester. And then we were given guidance from the state about what that looks like in terms of grading practices and then supporting instruction and then those attendance pieces. When you talk about starting a school year in a fully-remote environment, you're talking about communicating new expectations, especially as it relates to those expectations for attendance, um, and student grading. And I'll turn it over to Dr. King right there.
And I would just add that how would Plan B and Plan C look different from a remote learner perspective? Plan B, in middle school and high school, students would follow their bell schedule. In Plan C, students would, all students, would follow a half-day bell schedule. If we're completely remote, the afternoon would be dedicated to, for example, um, making sure that we implement students' IEPs, doing small group tutoring. If we're all remote, we're gonna have to take care and consideration around social, emotional and mental health support. So it might be counseling groups, it might be social work groups. Um, i- it would look a little different if we're all remote because we wouldn't be getting that in-third of in-person time. Um, and so you can see here with the schedule, our K-five teachers would communicate a schedule that's eight to noon uh, around their individual classroom schedule. Again, synchronous instruction for all of our students with internet access. Um, and then in grade six through twelve, it would be their bell schedule, but on an abbreviated schedule so that the afternoon is all about student support.
So, people are not confused. If we as a board choose Plan B, but I as a parent choose remote only, am I gonna follow this Plan C or I'm gonna follow along with Plan B, correct?
If I, if I, if the board chooses B and I choose remote only, the Engage option, I would follow the B schedule, the full-day schedule.
Okay.
And I think it's critical to understand with this particular piece, and I wanna directly address Mr. Craven's question, is there are, um, a near-infinite number of things we learned when schools closed. Um, most notably is we had no opportunity to prepare our people for what that was gonna look like. Um, you heard Dr. King say a little bit earlier that our professional development, regardless of what option the board chooses, is directly designed to support virtual learning cause we know that it is, one, a function of our calendar and a requirement. But also, we understand that we have to prepare people for that kind of environment cause we have to o- offer a fully-remote version to some percentage of our student bodies. Um, and so when you look at this, there is design professional development that's i- in that respect. So many of our teachers were extraordinary during the school closure period that they really fostered a lot of learning themselves. They were going, they were collaborating with their peers. They were reaching out, you know, across, um, all avenues to support, uh, the kind of environments that would best engage their kids. And if we talked about what it is that we really would attend to in a remote environment, a full Plan C environment, is we know the critical nature of that engagement piece. And when we talk about the social and emotional development, uh, connecting with a five-year-old who's new to school for the first time or an eighteen-year-old who's like, this is not what I imagined my senior year to be, we have a responsibility to ramp up what that looks like. Cause we learned a lot about what works and what doesn't work from a, hey, sit on a Zoom meeting or sit on a Google Meet meeting for, for X number of hours a day. And so when you think of our student services staff, when you think of our social workers, when you think of our teachers, you know, we talked long and hard about what would, what would assignment delivery look like in a fully-remote environment? And how could we connect to students who were, um, at home all day in that respect? We know that there has to be great attention given to supporting the individual student, you know? Very again, different than the school closure period where people were sort of locked into, uh, uh, an assignment or an assignment schedule that they were used to and it was new for all of us. Now nearly all of our students have seen something they had never seen before. Nearly all of them have. And as we talk about how we support them in that particular environment, there would be targeted support for, for serving our students as that initial year began to get opened. Yes, sir?
Would this schedule satisfy the state as far as hours of, of instruction?
The only way it satisfies the state is if we use that afternoon exactly as it's intended there. They would, we would have to not only offer, but also document that we were offering tutoring, uh, that we document that we offered and students were engaged in small group support, perhaps academic, perhaps social, emotional support.
So, for those small groups, some kind of attendance would be taken, well, even elementary?
Absolutely. And, and that would also be the time that we would implement a student's, for example, uh, IEP if they're an exceptional child, uh, their gifted education plan, their DEP if they're a gifted student, um, their English Language Learner Plan if they're an EL student. So it would be all about support for students.
And how would that work when there was no parents in the home? So direct that in the K-two situation?
Absolutely. I think that it would be, um, honestly, a partnership between home and school. And while we would love for it to happen during that eight to three, we recognize sometimes students need support outside of those hours. You, you heard Mr. Fender talk about his staff as debating, what are the best hours to keep that tech line open? We would do the same thing, uh, if we, if the board goes with Plan C, we would recognize that students' needs don't just fall in that eight to three, eight to four time period and work with students.
So, would staff, would we pay them extra? Or would they would have hot hours off in the middle of the day? So they could be with that kid at, like, six o'clock at night or?
Both of those could potentially be options. Uh, we even have some migrant staff working this summer, some flexed hours to be able to offer support to, to student populations. But we do, um, luckily have some federal funding to help with COVID where we could offer extra employment, just like setting up the tutoring lab under Plan B. Plan C, if we have to, uh, provide support outside of typical school hours, we could contract and offer extra employment for our teachers.
First of all, those are the students that I'm most worried about, uh, whether it's academic or? And we don't get any letters from those, those families. Hey, um, that's one thing, but I, I, I really don't know how in the world social workers, other than they go into the homes, counselors and special ed teachers. I, you know, that's just hardly visualized that.
And our.
Doing it via the computer. My, my daughter has had, um, social, um, ca- calls with counselors and with EC as well. It's, they're wonderful.
That is great. Are you there?
Yeah, yeah.
I think, and that's, I think that's the point she's trying to make. I, me, growing up as a kid, um, I definitely didn't have the means that I do now. Um, and I'm not sure who would be there at my house to make sure that I was online, that I was talking to that person that was going to help me or, or how to help my sister, cause my mom had to work, you know, as a single-parent household. Um, I worry about how we're gonna get, do we have enough devices? I know the answer to that, uh, we, we need more devices. Um, I know we gave out seven thousand or so, or whatever it was, sixty-two hundred, whatever. Um, we have to worry about our K-through-two kids. I really worry about the growing divide, um, in our, the haves and the have-nots, um, with a Plan C. You know, uh, the kids that have parents at home, um, have multiple devices, um, they're gonna be fine. Uh, but it's, it's the kids that look like me that, that could potentially not be fine. And, and, and I've already addressed this board on, um, differences in the data between, um, uh, some subgroups, specifically African-Americans, um, Hispanics in our schools as far as the learning gap and achievement gap goes. And my biggest fear with this is that that's going to grow exponentially. Um, so, we, if we decide to go with Plan C, we have to meet them where they're at. It's, it's not, you know, we're gonna try. It's, it's due. Um, and, and that's probably the scariest part of, of this plan. You know, Plan B has every logistical nightmare you can possibly think of. Um, but I really worry about those kids that, that could potentially get left behind. Miss, Miss Case?
But on Plan B, you got the same problem that two weeks out.
You do, you have the same, it, it.
But the K-two kids are there every day.
If they choose.
Well, now, I mean, we can't.
Then they got, they're, they're gonna get an education at home remotely.
I mean, if they choose to be at home, that's, I mean, there, we can't do anything about that.
But we're got to educate them remotely.
Not K-two. Oh, you mean if they choose. Well, if a parent chooses that, then I'm taking that as a commitment that they're going to.
The, the parents, I, I'll be honest, you know, my, my, my mom wouldn't have been able to choose to not send me to school.
Right.
And those kids are not going to, they're going to school. They need to go eat.
Yep.
Um, they need, um, they need to care. Um, those kids are going to be going, need to go to school. Now, you're absolutely right on three through twelve.
It is true for them, yeah.
And especially three through five, because I think a lot of those kids on those two-week breaks on the, on the. Um.
They're gonna be by themselves.
Yeah. Are there gonna be eight, are there gonna be eight-year-olds by themselves? Abs- uh, uh, unfortunately, absolutely.
And you also gotta think about, we've got over three hundred homeless McKinney-Vento kids in our county. What are, what are we gonna do with those? I mean, either Plan B and C is gonna be extremely hard to even keep them going the whole entire time.
Mr. E golf?
We know where our weaknesses are. And, and if we, if we choose B, we know, and let's say it becomes thirty-five, forty percent virtual. We know we're gonna go after the third graders and then the fourth graders. And we know, as a board and as an administration, we know where the attention needs to be. So, we, but we, we can't answer that now, cause we don't know how it's gonna be. But, I mean, K-through-two is so important. You, you, what is it? You, I, I, I always get this messed up. You learn to read and then you read to learn. You know, we, we gotta, we gotta talk to these kids and make sure they're getting it. And then, and then let's, and expand to third if there's availability. But, you know, I just, we know where we can strengthen.
I've got one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
The, explain to me, if they're doing Plan C, how the high school, do they go from their four classes? What about Hendrick- Hendersonville?
Um, all of our schools would develop, much like they have now for an early dismissal day where you do attend every class for a shortened class period. So you would get interaction with every teacher in your bell schedule, grades six through twelve.
And a critical additional piece of this is, again, that learning that took place during the remote period. Dr. King's team did a tremendous job being responsive to the feedback we were getting from parents and from teachers about developing really clear expectations, what successful virtual learning looks like. So how do you support that if you choose something like C? That there's, there's some direct and explicit teaching that has to be done for students and for staff and for parents in terms of how do we support that? You know, we, we had people tell us about whether or not an adult would be, uh, available to help a student frequently or infrequently or otherwise. And as Mr. Craven has noted, we have to think about every single family, thirteen thousand, four hundred of them. We have to consider what's gonna be the circumstance for every single family and how do we become the bridge for whatever that gap is? So when you think about a remote learning environment, you're thinking, okay, yes, we've gotta teach kids how to be successful. We talk all the time about, you cannot expect that which you don't explicitly teach. And when we went remote before, they were, there was no teaching for what that might look like. You know, it was simply, we're closed on Saturday and we'll try to, we'll try to coach you through that before. And so when we think about Plan C, and even to an extent, the, the elements of Plan B, you're talking about being able to provide some very explicit support and guidance to, uh, students about how they operate on that platform for however long they might operate, temporarily or otherwise, as well as being able to support the adults. So many families said, help me do this better. You know, help me figure out how to do this better because I'm supporting three children at home and I've got them, they're all learning at different times with different schedules. And so we learned a lot about how we would be able to do that better and be better, better partners with families as well. And I know that would be a critical piece of what Dr. King's team would be doing.
So, I, I know it might be beating a dead horse, but, so if we do Plan C, would we try to set certain standards across the board? So where people are not feeling like that second part, when we went, uh, really quickly and now everything's kinda leveled out? Because I think that's the confusion, cause, you know, one teacher did this and one teacher did that. So we're gonna kinda level it out, playing field pretty much?
That's part of the reason for the recommendation, if you choose Plan C, that they do follow a bell schedule in grade six through twelve. Uh, we learned the hard way that this spring, lots of teachers decided to meet with their students at nine AM. And the student was having to decide, which teacher do I meet with? They all called it for nine AM. We didn't have students following a bell schedule. And that was a, a hard lesson to learn a little too late. Um, another lesson learned for us was that the accountability, as soon as the grading guidelines came out from the state, we saw student engagement and accountability drop off. One of the reasons we are actually proposing to call the completely-remote option Engage is to remind us all that it was, it's gonna look different and be much more engaging. Any piece of remote will look much different this year than it did last year with a greater level of accountability for both staff and students.
Let's go through some of the challenges here of what, what we have.
Absolutely. Well, the first one you see, and you've already mentioned it as a board, is internet connectivity, that, that digital divide. We are, as I said, in a better place now to issue hotspots, but we recognize that in Henderson County, there are places that a hotspot does not work. Mr. Fender and hip staff have turned on, and you helped me, Mr. Fender. It's an option on Chromebooks that allows students to work offline. They could go to an online situ- like a, a parking lot with Wi-Fi.
Download.
Download and then go work offline at home where there's no internet and then drive back and upload those assignments. Uh, the second one, we all worry about, we worried about it this past spring, but if you were to choose Plan C, we recognize that social isolation. School, as you've said, is, uh, it's a social place. Um, students crave that peer-to-peer interaction. Part of our back-to-school PD for teachers is about how do we create more of that peer-to-peer interaction in a virtual environment, whether it's B or C? Um, student feeding, those support services, and then childcare. You've already mentioned that. Uh, it's a priority for us to make sure students are fed and it's a priority for us to make sure that, that students have childcare. We don't have the answer as a school system for childcare when students are either on Plan B, out on remote, or in this case, if you were to choose Plan C, we recognize the childcare challenge for so many families in our community.
And, and I'll just touch on those two bullets, cause I think it's critical to note and remind everybody, uh, not just who's listening, but the board who has praised these two groups of people. You know, when we went into the school closure period, these, our childcare folks and our child nutrition folks answered the bell, day after day after day. And right now, they are equally planning to answer that bell again with whatever decision takes place. When you think about our childcare options and that group of people, the leadership in our childcare program and the staff that provided childcare during the emergency closure period, as well as our child nutrition folks, they're sort of open to all options. You know, we're kind of, best idea wins. There are no, there are no rule-outs on that one. And so we're thinking, whether the board chooses B or C, we know we're gonna have to be creative with how we provide childcare, whatever those options look like. We know we're gonna have to be creative for how we continue to make sure that no child in our community goes hungry. Those are critical pieces because no matter what decision is made, we know that we're not gonna have eyeball-to-eyeball contact with every child when school starts. We hope to get there just as soon as possible, but we know that's not gonna be a case. So those are gonna be critical pieces for both those groups.
The next bullet you'll see there is about new content, new instruction, new school schedules. Um, if you were to choose Plan C, it will not look like the spring. And so how do we effectively communicate all of those changes in a new school year uh, for attendance, for grades, for not just review, but new content? So, that would be a challenge. The next one, staff capacity, you've seen that on both the challenges for Plan B and C. Uh, you think about, do we have enough people to pull this off and can we pull it off well? Will the training, uh, be enough to do this well?
Can, can do it.
I have great faith in our staff and we threw, everybody's, our, our instructional staff's capacity to handle remote learning varied greatly on March sixteenth.
Right.
We're starting to see that equalize more because our staff, who were not ready to teach in this format, have risen to the challenge and they're learning how to do that. And we feel really confident in our back-to-school professional development plan that we're gonna add more tools to the to- toolbox. But again, a challenge, and, and this is just my opinion. If I'm a teacher, I find Plan B more challenging than Plan C cause at least in Plan C, my entire class is learning in the same format. If I'm on Plan B, I've got different formats at the same time. And that can be tough from a management standpoint.
Good.
The last one there was continuity of workforce. Just in all of these situations, we worry about the, um, health and safety of our adults.
And so the slide that you see in front of you is ultimately the one that you've posed, uh, from go, is so what happens next as this board considers the options that we presented before you? Is ultimately, uh, one of these two plans would be approved, um, and, and supported by the Board of Education and the school system leadership. And then we would have, uh, the immediate task, as you might imagine, of communicating that in great detail and continued detail and, um, with continued updated information. Because as you've heard each of us say, when you talk about guidance from the Department of Public Instruction, from DHHS or otherwise, that changes all the time. Uh, we are frequently reminded that those are living documents. They are not one-time publications, they're being updated. And so as we have frequently asked questions to be able to address those and provide information about that. And then to address those areas, Ms. Holt talked about it already, as you think about your high-risk candidate, candidates. And any option, when you talk about face-to-face environments or you talk about people starting to work together in close quarters, you have to give consideration to how we support those individuals that, that consider themselves to be high-risk based on whatever that classification is. Training all of our staff, our school leaders, our employee groups. Again, those expectations being critical. Um, and I'd emphasize the last one, uh, we've said it many, many times, but the fluid nature. If we learned anything, if we learned anything, is we have to be prepared to change at a moment's notice. Um, and we have to be flexible with that and show great grace and understanding and empathy to each other. Um, I've been so appreciative of the grace and encouragement in our community and I hope that that is the watermark behind this slide.
I mean, I say that once.
Yes, sir, I would be glad to. The grace and empathy in our community, because we truly do empathize with, with every situation. You know, Mr. Smith talked about something that I think we all know. Everybody's sense of, of risk is different.
Yeah.
Everybody's sense of comfortability is different. Everybody's family situation is different, you know? And when we talk about who we care about and who the superintendent charges us is, is truly think, we have staff members across our school system that are all facing unique and different challenges when they consider and hear these plans. We have students who are facing unique and different challenges. We have parents and family groups are. And all of those things are wrapped up into one, and none of these plans can accommodate all of those things. It's simply not possible. That's, that is the world we live in right now. But we wanna remind each other to be flexible and show grace and to be thoughtful about that because none of them are etched in stone. All of them are flexible in terms of what the needs of our school system are.
In Plan C, is there any category of employee who would not be fully paid?
We don't believe so. We, what we've considered and we've spent a lot of time thinking about how we might have to uniquely use employees. So let's think about it from an engagement standpoint. Delivering assignments, connecting with families under Plan C, maybe delivering food in the same way that we really expanded our meals on the bus. We recognize that some of our employee categories might be able to have alternative duties as assigned in order that we captured what those objectives are. But it would certainly be our priority to make sure that everyone was able to work and work at the full level of for which they were employed.
Teacher assistant?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Sure. Questions?
I'm, I'm, I'm waiting till.
Yeah, let's finish. This is the summary and then we can, uh.
This is very quickly.
The final page here.
We've talked about it, any decision you make, A or B, can be changed. It's not like you're making a decision for, for B that will last, um, all the way till next year or, or C. Um, what we'll do is make a plan and then like I say, it's fluid, it can change. Um, virtual option is available for any student who prefers remote learning. I don't know how many times we need to say that, we need to get it out, shout it from the mountaintops, that if we do choose B, there is an option for parents to stay home with their children and work, uh, remotely. We will provide the safest school environment possible. But yet, you know, and I've already said it, it's not if, it's when, there's gonna be risk. We'll continue to work with Steve Smith. I certainly appreciate his partnership that he come today. And as always, we're going to continue to work with DPI, DHHS to help us through this, this time.
So, we've been pounding away at this for about three and a half hours now. Um, and, and I'd kinda like to shift gears a little bit. And, um, I think we all see the positives and the negatives to, to both, to all the situations that we have in front of us. But what I'd really like to do is I want you to take off your professional hat and give me your personal opinion, as Bo Caldwell, on what, what do, what should we pick? And what would you do if you're sitting in our chairs, um, to provide the best education that we can?
Sure.
But also keep the kids as safe as possible? Um, I'd like to hear from each of your staff members, um, and, and really see what you think personally, uh, we should do.
And, and thank you, uh, Mr. Craven. And, and yes, um, you, you ask for my personal opinion and not my professional because I think that, you know, here, here's, you know, we get, basically, here's what the governor says. It's Plan B, you can go Plan C. So we start working on Plan B because that's what the governor tells us to do. And so this weekend, um, when I experienced heavy downpours at my house twice, and we live on top of the hill, the. then you live on top of the hill with the dirt road, then you have to go shovel out culverts and, and work on your drive. A lot of times you start thinking about the, the plans. Plan B, Plan C. And, and you said it, Mr. Craven, there, there, you know, my dad always used to tell me, so if you got a dilemma, let's look at the pros and look at the cons. Um, and, and for me, the, the pros for, for Plan B is we're, we're slowly getting them back. Uh, there, there's some children who we're getting back. Um, you know, K through two is coming back. Um, and the, the three through 12 is coming back once every two weeks and then the remotely the other times. So the, the plus is. The negative looks nothing like school. Nothing like school. Um, we'd love to say that the kids would go to the cafeteria. We'd love to say they would laugh and then have a good time. But yet I guess it could happen, but it's nothing like school. Mask every day, uh, teachers wearing mask every day, trying to communicate. You, I, I so worry, and I know Steve said the shields, but yet if, you know, it's still some of this out there. We're going to allow the shields or not? And if we don't, you lose the facial expression and the smiles. You lose the smiles. And once again, to me in education, it's relationships and you lose that. And, and to me, that is a huge, huge, uh, negative a, a, about Plan B is yes, we say that we want kids back for a social emotional, but are we truly doing a social emotional when they come back? And there's only a few in the class? And then you turn around and, and once again, we're taking away the assemblies and all the stuff that makes it schools. Are we truly helping with the social emotional? I truly worry, Mr. Craven, about Plan B. It's for my staff. You know, we've talked a lot about, uh, about the children. And I worry so much about the staff on Plan B. You know, um, it, it, to me, I worry like I opened up about not having enough staff to cover what we need to cover. I worry about the staff and all of a sudden that, that here we're asking teachers and a tremendous hard job of teaching 30 kids. It, it's a hard job. And Ms. Case, you did it for years and you did it wonderful. But it's tough, is it not? When you walked in there with 30 kids and, and now we're asking them to teach 30 kids, but unfortunately 10 of them are going to be here and 20 of them are going to be here this week. And then you get a new 10 this week and a new 20 this week and they're coming and going. Once again, that's just such a, a, a negative tone for me on Plan B. I just, when I start looking at the pros and the cons and then I go to C. When you say, what about C? I don't like C either. I don't like B, I don't like C. Because you said, I worry about that divide. I worry about the kids when it doesn't have the, the internet and are we going to lose them? And I, and we were quickly this afternoon thinking, or this morning, thinking about just out-of-the-box type things of even putting hubs on yellow buses and running the yellow buses and running their routes and stopping at houses and take the kid food and let them sit there and, and they get on the bus and do there's some work on the internet and get off the bus. I mean, we're trying to think of everything that we can to make sure that if we choose C, that we don't have that divide. C protects our staff. C protects our staff, which is once again, I really truly worry about. Because yes, we can argue all the time about what children are not getting it and kids are getting it, but yet we have 1,800 staff here in this county, largest employer in Henderson County. B, B scares me with staff. So you asked me how I feel and if I had to pick a plan right now, I'm going to go way back to I very first walked into this office and I was upstairs working in facilities. And then I went downstairs and was working in human resources. And then I went over and became assistant superintendent. It sounds like I couldn't hold a job, but they were all positive. But the thing about it is for every office, everything I heard was make the best choice, the safest choice, the healthiest choice you can for students and staff. And every time I would call and say, look, we're getting ready to call school off. And I'm going to do what? Air on what?
Side of safety.
Want to air on the side of safety. And it scares me, I guess, when I'm digging that ditch for the second time on Sunday. Am I truly erring on the side of safety if I recommend B? Because you know and I know, I'm going to bring staff in. We're going to bring kids in. I'm just afraid I'm not erring on the side of safety.
So from that, your, your opinion would be for us to start virtually?
My opinion would be to start virtually, uh, for, for a period of time. And, and we could, I could meet with Steve. Uh, we could go for the first till the, the end of September. We go to October 1st. We could go to September, the 7th. We could be a month, whatever time that Steve and I would feel like would be a good time to, uh, feel like it would be a, a better opportunity for me to air on the side of safety. Um, I, I'm just, like I said, I think the issue for me is when, when Steve said, how, how is everything going to be safe? It's social distancing and everybody keeping their mask on. And a superintendent, I cannot guarantee on Plan B. I cannot guarantee you on Plan B. Both of those are going to happen 100% of the time.
So you would suggest Plan C and then, um, look at data trends, um, from making sure that, that, you know, we're doubling our rates every, every month. Uh, Mr. Smith said, right now as far as, um, COVID goes. And then look again, October 1st-ish, uh, at Plan B?
I would look before October 1st as well. I would certainly hope that there would be some type of change by October 1st. You know, Labor Day, I've heard for time, for time that Labor Day is going to be the spike. September is going to be the spike. So therefore this would get us through the Labor Day spike if we start looking at something on, on September the 17th, one month. And if we're good, then yes, by no later than October 1st, we'll be bringing children back. Hopefully by then, we're going to have guidance also from the state that we could go from C to A. I mean, you, you, you never know what would happen. And to be honest with you, sometimes I almost think for my teacher's point of view, just on the workload, I know I'm, I'm jumping from air to the side of the safety, but maybe, maybe hopefully in October, then it's, the, the slide is going downward. The trend is going downward and hopefully we can even bring more kids back. Because let's be honest, I'm putting myself in that classroom teacher's room of, of number one, making sure all the kids have masks, making sure the social distance. And oh, by the way, I got 20 kids online. And I've also got to make sure I'm teaching besides taking care of the 10 here. I just worry about the educational process with Plan B. But yes, it would be a trend that we would look at constantly, daily, when we want to make a change.
Can I ask you your opinion of you while we're on opinion? What if we did like the K2 in person and everybody else on virtual? Would that make you feel any better?
You know, Michael, I, I think the, the issue would be, um, you know, I do worry about the K2. I worry about the staff on K2. Um, that, there, there's pros and cons with that. We, 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 we batted that around. And I think that if the board would like for us to explore that option, I, I would need to process and know what would make me feel better. You know what I'm saying? Health and safety wise, I'm still worried about the K through two and the teachers. I, I, I didn't get a chance to read this about, you know, is K through two, are they, are they less apt to spread it? Are they not? And, and, you know, and, and unfortunately, I think you read one doctor's thing, another doctor might put out. And as Steve says, the sample size and the length of, of the study is not being long enough to truly prove what needs to be, to be proven according to, to Steve. Uh, I think that that would be your goal. We as a staff would circle the wagons and, and we could bring back a plan.
Before we get there, I want to hear some other opinions. But whenever you're done.
Um, 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 I could, listen, time's an essence. I could preach all.
I would like to hear from, uh, Dr. Bryant now.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Craven. And, and thank you to members of the board for a chance to offer our perspective on this, uh, individually. I, I would start just by saying that I think what I feel is true for everybody that you see sitting in front of you is that I don't know that we have a personal opinion that's not formed by our professional opinions. Because my, well, again, with, with respect, my entire career has been in education.
Sure.
Um, uh, it is the first job and the only job I've ever known uh, after leaving a farm in the eastern part of the state. Um, and I was glad to leave that farm. But when I think about leaving that farm, I think about all the lessons that I was taught and the responsibility that was instilled upon me that I've tried to apply educationally. And you heard something Mr. Caldwell said that I very much identify with. And that is, I often think first as a high school English teacher because that was my first experience. And I think about high school, the high school student experience and how critical their interaction is to their social development. I think about, uh, serving as an elementary school principal and thinking about early childhood development and what I learned and what I was taught about seeing five-year-olds grow and the need for structure and routine and the literacy development. Cause you said it right, Mr. Egoff, how critical it is that we support them during that period of time. I think about my transition into HR and the responsibility to become the chief advocate for all of the staff in our school system, to be the champion for their needs and their success, uh, within the school system. And then I think about the current work that I do operationally, knowing that there are so many people who make this happen the right way. And that when I talk about them, our job is to care for everybody uh, in the best way possible. So many times we try to ask our teaching staff and our student groups to focus on the stuff you can control. You know, let's make sure that educators are not the variable. And I share that specifically because I recognize fully professionally and personally, Plan B is full of variables we cannot control. Many of those variables potentially put people at greater risk than a fully remote environment. I will tell you candidly, I don't think there's anybody in the school system that wants kids back in classrooms more than educators in Henderson County. Like we are ready. We are ready. And yet the conditions are such that there are things we cannot control. And there's data that's going in a direction that's adverse to that. And if we have a responsibility to err on the side of caution, as this fine man has taught me at three o'clock in the morning, usually in Januaries and Decembers, is John, before we make that phone call, we are going to make sure that we are making a decision that is best for everyone's safety. Not best for everyone's convenience and certainly not best for everyone's, um, agreement. That will not always happen with respect, but that we would do what we believe to be safest. We recognize right now, this board, as you asked, if we were sitting here making that same decision, we have a choice. You know, have a choice that can mitigate that risk to its greatest level, which is a fully remote environment? Or to increase that risk in a somewhat face-to-face environment? And so if I'm making that choice, as you just articulated, my choice would be for, for us to begin on a remote environment and to advocate and, and strive diligently and persistently to get to a face-to-face environment as soon as possible. I think there's nothing that we would love more than if in the next few weeks, we saw our local community's health and day, safety data allow us to get to say a Plan B sooner than later and move to a Plan A sooner than later. I pray for that miracle you spoke of every night. You know, that, that, that our communities might be able to do that. But if, but if our champ, if our, our focus is about controlling the things we can control, then the, the personal and professional side is that we have to eliminate as many of those variables as possible. And with that in mind, I would recommend a fully remote option to start the school year.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
And, um, last but not least, Dr. King. Um, being that you are the champion of our instruction piece of this and where a lot of this is going to lie, um, I'd like to hear from you as well.
So I, I think like everybody in this room and probably everybody listening, um, from home, this weighs heavy on our hearts and, and it has for me as well. Um, we heard Steve Smith say that every family has a different risk level. Um, and many of you who know me really well know that I am risk averse, um, as a general rule, um, in every aspect of my life. I'm risk averse. Um, when it comes to instruction, I believe there's nothing as magical as a teacher and a student in a classroom interacting. That is where the magic of education, of public education takes place. And so what do I want? What I want is not an option. I want us to be back in pre-COVID life where we were honestly worrying about something like lice, you know? That's not where we are today. That's not where we are. We're not talking about that. And so when I think about, um, everything that I've heard Mr. Caldwell and Dr. Bryant say, um, I, I would support a fully remote option with the hope that our community would want to see students in school as badly as we want to and that we would behave that way as a community. Um, that we would do what it takes to bring those numbers down in Henderson County, um, for our kids to be able to make school the safest place possible.
Thank you.
I would like.
Yes, sir.
This is our personal opinion.
Sure.
But please, Board of Education, when you make a decision, you decide it's Option B, uh, I want you to understand we're with you on option. We'll support option. But as to what we felt like, obviously, yeah, it would be certain that the Board of Education, we're supporting. I just, Dr. King said, uh, so no decision is going to be fine. Even B, even B, people are going to be upset. Oh, I do agree. The only, the only thing that we can tell them, everybody will be happy because all is world A, that everybody's coming back and we're going to make them all safe. Besides that, it goes downhill. But I think that's why we all of a sudden felt like, right now, we just felt like C for us. Let's be fair. We will support whatever you do.
Let's just recap that again though. So you, all three of you believe we should start remotely. And then with the hopes of looking at a late September, early October, hopefully we can start reintroducing kids back into the learning divi- environment, which would give us essentially two months from right now, from where we stand today, to hopefully see that trend line start to go down instead of, uh, going the opposite way as it is right now.
Exactly. We're hoping that if we don't bring all the children back, that our trend number.
Don't go up.
We go, we go.
Right.
Bring them back, they go down. I'm afraid if we do come back.
It'll go up.
Then it could go up. And now we're going back to, say, C. I'm, I'm hoping what we're doing is help the community and certainly not, not explode our numbers and help to keep them low. So then we can get to our goal and then hold them to get back to A. That's our goal. Of course, the governor has to let us go to A. Hopefully when it comes to A, we'll be ready to do that.
Okay.
Because that's truly what's best for children. School, the way we know it.
Absolutely.
But we have to have the help, the cooperation, if this is what you, what we decide, of the community. I mean, as long as the community is divided and doesn't wear masks and doesn't quit gathering in groups and.
None of it matters.
None of it matters.
We need additional funding too.
Well, I'm going to be honest. I wish we never would have asked your opinions. I, I can't go against what the three of you say. I mean, I, you're talking about the three people in, in my environment that I respect the most out of anybody. And for all, I just wish two of you were on the other, you know? I just, I, I feel like, I mean, you guys know every single facet of our school system, of our kids, of our staff, of, and I want to go back. I want my kids back. I want my little girl to see her friends and her teacher. And it, I'm so tired of crying over this dang COVID stuff. It, I'm just, I'm sick of life the way that it is. I mean, I'm glad our families are healthy and we we have the opportunity to do remote school, no matter what it is the board ends up choosing, but I can't have an opinion that is, I might choose chocolate when you choose vanilla, but as far as what's best for our 14,000 kids, I can't, I can't vote against what you guys are recommending.
And I'm feel the same way, although I think kids need to be in school. I think that the only safe thing is if you don't ever leave your house. And I think kids need to be in school. Maximum flexibility is Plan B. Parents can keep them home, they can send them. That's maximum flexibility. And Plan C is a whole lot easier, except for the parents that have to go to work and don't have anybody to take care of those kids in remote. But I'm like Amy. The three of y'all are recommending Plan C. I cannot go against it, but I won't, I telling you that the most important thing is for us to get these kids back in school.
Let me say something. My child, Jace, about, I don't know, I mean, I'm sure my wife will hear about this and I have everything wrong, but probably like 18 weeks, he was diagnosed with diaphragmatic hernia. His stomach, spleen, and small intestine developed in his chest area. So much, but, because the diaphragm had a hole in it. All these organs developed in the lung area. So much that the left lung was compromised. I might start crying about this one. It's been long ago enough that
Do it.
I knew it. There's so much stuff involved up here, the left lung was compromised. Well, it pushed the heart over. That's how we first noticed it, because we were doing a ultrasound, and we were like, the heart is in the wrong place. Because it was, all of a sudden, it was pushing over. So the left lung was compromised, the right lung was compromised. We spent, I don't know, it seemed like years in Charlotte. And when we had to go down there, they have two ECMO machines in the state, and that's where they breathe for the child and they oxygenate the blood and they breathe, they do the job of the heart and the lungs for the child. There are two of them. There and one in, I think, Winston-Salem, and there was another one somewhere else. We went there, we were there forever. And he had so many close calls, he was not supposed to live. Anyway, he's living, he's back, you know? But he sits there, and he sits there, and this is how he breathes. He's just always out of breath. That's just the, that's just the way he's gonna be. You know, I've always told my wife, I said, you know, if you measure life in breaths, this is not gonna be as long. God take twice as many breaths as everybody else does, just sitting there. I know all this. You know what? But I'm not gonna let him not live. I mean, he's working in Ingalls. And I know Ingalls is not risk-free. He wears a mask. That's fine. I don't think we washed it. You're supposed to wash these three or four times a week. I don't think anybody ever washes a mask. He doesn't wear gloves. I mean, I'm not gonna say because you got this condition that you can't live. I mean, it's just not fair to him. And if he gets this disease and he's, I mean, my, that's just the way, it's the way it is. But I'm looking at this, and I'm elected on this board because I'm here to represent the people that aren't large enough, that aren't old enough to make decisions for themselves. And I'm like, you know, these fifth through eighteen, five through 18-year-olds, they're going to school and they're relying on us and everything. And I'm like, what's best for them? Not best for everybody else, and I know that might get me in trouble, but I'm saying what's best for them? What's best for their futures, for their learning, for for their, you know, it's in school. It's it's in school. And I read this, and it's in school. And the best way to do that, I mean, I I just, and I like this so much more than the other counties' schools, because a lot of them had remote learning for higher up, but but day-to-day or alternating weeks younger, and that's fine. But I'm telling you, I was in high school. I mean, I know what happens when there are no kids around, when there are no parents around. I mean, I know there's social issues, there's there's drug dependency, there's there's alcohol, there's there's a bunch of other stuff. The high schoolers, they need structure, too. We all need structure. And 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 I I hear you, but you've never had a child, and you don't, well, maybe you do, I shouldn't say that. But you don't, but my child, he wants to go to school, and he wants to take the risk, and I'm not gonna take that away from him. Now, if if other people say, hey, look, I wanna go to C, we offer that. If they say, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna risk my kid, I'm not gonna, then that's fine. You have that option. But I'm not gonna say, guess what? You're not going to school because you breathe too fast, because you have half of a left lung, half of a right lung. I'm not gonna do that. I'm gonna let him go to school and and I'm gonna, and I'm, no. Is that whole thing on mute? Oh, and that whole thing, you know, I'm gonna volunteer what I can do. I'm gonna volunteer to be a bus driver if if we choose B. I'm gonna volunteer to check temperatures. I will volunteer to come late to my work because we are gonna need help. And and I will do that, and I will, I mean, I'm signing up, and I think if we, this is a very giving community, and if we and if we ask for the help, we'll get the help. And if you have to do another background check on me, fine. I mean, do one weekly, you might need to. No, I'm just, but anyway, I wanna help, and I think we can get through this, but I don't think putting the 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 kids out of school, all of them, is in their benefit. And that's why I'm here. And it's for them, and it's for their education. And all y'all, when you first said, you said, you know, kindergarten is so much harder because they don't know their teacher, and they don't have, you know, it was okay when we all went virtual mid-school year, you know, because, you know, they knew, they had the relationship, they knew the teachers, they knew the routine and everything, but now just starting, they're not gonna know that, they're not gonna know how to, and I and I go back to that, that's what y'all said. So I'm back to put them in school and let the parents decide, let the kids decide, let the staff decide. And if they all decide that we can't do it, and if the kids can't do it, and if the parents don't want them to do it, and the faculty, then fine, we have no choice. But I'm not gonna take that decision away. And I'm sorry y'all missed half that.
I got a text, they heard most of everything.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Ms. Case?
I wrote about four pages of notes for myself before I came on the pros and cons of B and C. And I taught for many years, and I I would be nuts now if I had to teach virtually, because I'm not a computer whiz, and I love, love, love my kids. But the other side of that is that I cannot, I cannot send kids back to school and have it on my conscience if kids get the virus, if if teachers get the virus, and I have to think of teachers, too, because, you know, I was one of them. And it's scary. It is scary for parents, it's scary for teachers, it's scary for some kids. I know social distancing is gonna be a nightmare. It's not gonna work because K-12 will not stay away from each other because they've been away from each other so long. And, you know, there's just not a way that that can be done. And I know that this B gives parents a choice, but I am sort of making a choice here for them, too, with B or C, and teachers, you know, B is not the best thing for safety. And I have to go back to the safety issue that I don't want to be in a position where I vote for B, and then we have an outbreak at schools, we have an outbreak with bus drivers, with cafeteria, with teachers. I I just, you know, and in the, in Sunday's paper, it said that county, the, in our county, 15% of cases so far were infants to 19 years old. That's 158 kids, and we weren't even in school. We weren't even in school, people. And it's gonna get, you know, I just feel like it's gonna get worse if we send them back to school. And, you know, I just, I I can't, because of safety, I could not go with Plan C, I mean, with Plan B, although I would like to have them back in school. I definitely would like to have them back in school. But I just don't think it's gonna look any better on August 17th and maybe worse. And, you know, I want us to be open that we can change it at any time, you know, and weekly we look at the statistics and weekly we look at, see how it's going. And I think virtual or the remote learning, I think it's gonna be better this year because we don't have those rules of not checking attendance and not checking, you know, and not giving grades. And I I understand parents, you know, having jobs and stuff and needing needing kids back in school. But they're still gonna have two weeks to have to deal with, you know, two two weeks on and one week off of dealing with some kind of childcare. And I I don't, I just don't wanna put bus drivers, secretaries, custodians, cafeteria workers, principals, vice principals, and teachers and kids and the county office and staff. I just don't wanna put them in a safety position where, you know, the virus can especially hit our kids and teachers and and the other people in the schools who work with those kids. But I want us to stay open that we can change it at any time. And, you know, I I just, I wanna thank all of you who've done everything and the teachers who have put in so much work, and they're gonna be more experienced this time, and I'm hoping that virtual would be better because they're gonna be more experienced and know better how to do, you know, things that may not have been successful before. But every every one of y'all, I feel like, you know, y'all have done so much on B, you've done so much on A, and you've done so much on C, and whichever one we pick, you know, we're not gonna make everybody happy. And it's sort of like y'all have wasted your time, but you haven't because we may go to a B or we may go to an A a little bit later. So because of safety of our, especially our kids, I I just can't vote with B. I have to go with C.
Okay, Coach Wood?
Yes. Well, this has been a tough decision. I know a lot of you had sleepless nights and worried about this decision because, as I have. And I've looked, tried to look at all the issues involved, and it came down for me is that can we open the schools safely? And Plan B has a lot of issues that concern me about about safety. You know, we've we've spent a lot of money and put a lot of time in in getting our schools safer.
Sure.
Or something that probably a slight chance of having a school shooting. But this is not a slight chance. We we we've got it in our schools. And it 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 is dangerous. Even if a child doesn't show a lot of symptoms and maybe has a slight case, or or they're they're finding long-term effects of having this. And I I'll always be a teacher and a coach, and and so I have to have that head on as well, and we gotta think about what's best for the students, the safety, but also our staff. Because, you know, they they're, a lot of them are old like me, and they that they're susceptible, their health, and and none of the, none of us, none of the teachers were were, when they went to school to be a teacher, I thought they'd ever be in a situation where they would have to teach in in what we're facing now. And I agree with Mr. Caldwell that if we're gonna err less, err on the side of of safety. We've come a long way in in our virtual, what we've learned last year, last spring in virtual learning. And I think that we can have a system there that will get us to where we can open our schools back for our students again, which is a goal for all of us, I think. But but we're just not, we, I just don't think we can safely do it that way. Because I think there's a clear and present danger in our schools. And I just can't vote to bring our people back. So I have to vote for C, Plan C, completely virtual.
Corin, would you like to add anything?
I don't know that there is anything to add, that, you know, you cannot ever be completely safe. This could go on for months, a year. And we will have lost these kids for a year. There's there's nothing that's right, whatever we do. I I totally agree with Dr. Egoff over there. But I can, like Amy said, I I trust these three guys, ladies. And and I'll go, and I think in the end, once we all express our opinion, that however the majority feels, that we should all then come together and say, it is a unanimous decision. I might have been leaning to maximum flexibility, which means anytime you're flexible, that just means it's harder.
Yeah.
And and Plan B is very flexible, and it's really, really hard. The more flexible you are, the harder it is. Mr. Caldwell and his, talking about the relationships, well, Plan C has no relationships. Nothing, except what you see, we we laugh, and and when I have my Zoom meeting with my Sunday School class, wherever, you're just like the Hollywood Squares. And and that's no good either. And so there's no right decision. But I do, I would encourage everybody. If if the majority feel that we need to go with C, that we would all then say, okay, my vote is is C.
Thank you. Ms. Rapture?
It's so hard. As many others, I mean, sleepless nights. Like, I mean, I was probably in tears last night going over certain parts of how do we do this, how do we do that? I mean, I have family members that have health issues. I mean, I have everything, and I I care about a lot of these teachers enough where they call me regularly. I mean, you know, I mean, Bo was my elementary principal. I still remember the first time he opened up that car door. And so, you know, we're asking even, that's not even possible even with Plan B. You know, that some of that personal close touch to start off the school is, it's not there. Do I believe that all kids should go to school? Yes. I'm extremely worried about our foster care kids. I'm extremely worried about our homeless McKinney-Vento kids. I'm extremely worried about the poverty kids that are, how they're gonna figure out how they're gonna get food, but I know as a district, whatever we do, we will make sure that kids have everything that they need. Just even looking at county, the county's COVID-19 dashboard here, you have from the zero to 19, you have 16% that are the, out of the COVID numbers. Out of the 20 to 39, you have 26%. And out of age 40 to 59, you have 27%. So you're thinking about 69% of the COVID cases those age group affects our school system. I mean, I I would love if we could figure out a way to let the kindergartners go to school. I know how some teachers, it's hard to teach kindergarten online. I know that's a new challenge. I mean, even when we canceled school in March, or the governor did, how hard that was for those teachers from those early age groups, because they really didn't even use Chromebooks. You, most of them did paper, little packets, need people to come by. I mean, I think for, you know, liability-wise, unfortunately, people love to sue, you know? So what if someone did contract COVID? Are we liable? Is, will they try to come after it? It's the what ifs. I mean, I'm I'm fine with the online, with the option that we review it and so long, so even if we say review it in six weeks or nine weeks and then review it, we have to have that option. Out of most of the teachers and staff that I think many of us heard from, there, I think they're not scared about going back to see the kids. I think they're more scared about the unknowns associated with it. I mean, they're like, what if a kid has it? How how's it gonna affect me? You know, how's it gonna affect my family? You know, I'm worried about having a school bus driver wear a mask, and what if their oxygen level goes too low, or it gets so hot there, and some of them, one of them crashes from it. I mean, I'm just saying, this is a lot of the what ifs I'm just not comfortable with on that part. I mean, I'll support the staff and I'll support the whole board, whatever decision. But I I'm I'm, I like to Um, but I, I'm, I'm, I like to see at least the little kids in school somehow. Um, but if it's not possible and if the majority of the board is not for it, then, um, I'll support the final decision.
I wanna add one thing. Um, according to my math, the, um, there's point fifteen percent. So that's, I'll, I'll round up. That's two tenths of one percent of our Henderson County population that has been diagnosed. I know they haven't all been tested, but not a big, that's not much.
I haven't been tested. But I wanna say something else to your point. I can't vote one way and act another. And we just got back from a trip to Charleston, Isle of Palms. My son came with me, with the family. He fished with his uncle, who lives in Goose Creek, three times. He met with his, uh, cousins and his aunt. I'm not very good at that.
Once removed.
Yeah, from Portland. So we were all there staying in the same house. I can't vote to stop taking risks for my son and then say, okay, but you can go to Wild Dunes with me and you can hang out with Hank and Jordan and my sister who lives in Oregon. And you can go fishing with my uncle who lives in Goose Creek, but I don't want you to go to school. I mean, so I, I, I regretfully, I'm not gonna be able to vote. And it's not gonna be unanimous. It appears that I'm the only one that feels that way. But I'm not gonna vote one way and then tell my son, you can't go to Wild Dunes with us, or you can't go fishing, or you can't go to the grocery store with us, or you can't go out to eat with us. You can't take any of these risks. You're gonna have to live in a bubble. So.
No, I, I think you misunderstood. I'm just saying if, and it was gonna be a split vote.
Okay.
But in the end, these guys need to know we're unanimous in supporting them.
Right.
Oh, okay.
Right, right, right.
That's what I meant.
Unless you meant it has to be seven oh, and I was like, it's not gonna be seven oh.
It's gonna be a-
It's gonna be six one probably, but.
Let's, uh, we've got, we've got two more to go here. And, um, let's get through this and then, and then, um, we've been out for four hours. So Ms. Hope?
So I'm glad you gave your little spiel. I feel like Plan B gives the flexibility that if staff does not feel safe, they can, they can take their leave of absence, they can stay home. If parents don't feel safe, they can keep their kids home. I have a hard time taking that decision away from people. I have a hard time telling parents who are gonna leave their six, seven, and eight-year-old kids at home alone that we're not gonna watch your children. I, I, I have a hard time with that. And I know that the abuse has gone up a lot since we've not seen our kiddos since March. That there is, um, there are kids out there that are getting abused and our teachers are not seeing them, our teachers are not laying eyes on them. Is it safer to do Plan C? Absolutely, it's safer. But I don't feel like I have the right to impose what I feel on a parent. If, if they, if they do not feel comfortable sending their child to school, they can do remote. They can, we will support that a hundred percent. Staff, if you don't feel comfortable, it's not gonna be held against you. And we may look and say, okay, here it is, August first, seventy percent of our staff doesn't feel comfortable. There's no way we can do it. I mean, that may be what we're looking at anyway. Uh, wh- what I think would happen is if we open up schools, within three weeks, the governor would have us shut down. But at least those kids would get in and meet their teacher. At least they would be able to see their teacher and form some relationship that, that, you know, they could open up. Like, uh, there was stuff inappropriate happening at, at home this summer and, you know, there was nobody I could see and talk to. And they formed a bond and that teacher knew to check in on them somehow. I, I just, I don't feel like I have the right to, to take that away from those parents.
Thank you. Um, as Scott Rhodes would say, I wrestled with this thing for
Ever.
For a long while now. And, um, I'm not usually a really stressed-out person. I'm pretty easygoing and kinda chill and take things as they come. But, um, this last week especially, um, especially it's been really, really difficult. Um, trying to make the right decision, you know. And as Corn said, everybody said, there's no right decision.
No.
We're gonna make half the people mad no matter which way we go. Um, you know, this weekend alone, I've had a hundred and forty-seven emails. And that's not even counting the ones that I've gotten today while we had this meeting. Um, from parents and staff and, and, and everyone else. Um, I've had twenty or thirty phone calls just Friday and Saturday alone. I shut my phone off Sunday. Um, I talked to probably, I don't know, I'm called a hundred different parents, sets of parents, um, throughout this weekend, um, with varying degrees of what they wanna do and what they think we should do. And, um, I kinda had my mind set because I'm at home. Uh, my wife is now working. And I've got three kids and, and I, I'll be honest, I'm not built for it. Um, I, my wife is a, is the, is the true hero in this. Um, but I know I can get through it. I'm super, super concerned about our kids that, um, like, like Amy said, that, um, could possibly be seeing more signs of abuse, more, uh, food insecurities, um, get left further and further behind in their learning gaps. Um, I'm not sure B catches them up on that, to be honest. I'm, I'm not sold on that really. Then I think about myself, um, a little personal stuff. You know, I work for one of the largest banks in the world. Um, and they're not, not letting me come back to my office until the first of the year, at earliest. Um, I'm not allowed to meet clients face to face. I have to meet them virtually. Um, but yet, uh, I wanna send my kids back into an environment uh, that my company won't even let me go into. So I talked with staff this morning and I kinda knew where their, their heads were at and, and, and where they were gonna come, their, their decision on this. And so at that moment, after we got off the phone, I, I, for really the first time, I, I sat my kids down. And we all sat in my bed and they all came piled in and, and, um, and I asked them flat out. I said, um, how do you guys feel about going to school? And my five-year-old, he doesn't really know. I mean, I think he, he hasn't been to preschool since March or April, or whatever it was. And he's kinda forgot it. My daughter is seven, Kira. She's a social butterfly and needs and yearns to be around her friends. Lucas is kinda my easygoing, just chill, just kinda, you know, go with the flow type of kid. He's going into eighth grade. And Kira starts crying, bawling, and said, I'm scared to go to school. I wanna see my friends, but I'm scared to go to school. And that broke my heart. Um, you know, that's all we hear in the news these days. That's all we're seeing in the paper. Hell, that's all we're talking about right now. Um, is, is how dangerous this thing is and, and, and we wanna put our kids back in there as quick as possible. Lucas mentioned, I, you know, I don't feel comfortable going to school either. I, I think I can do it online. Um, and I would rather do that until they, you know, things get a little bit safer. And so that really woke me up this morning. Um, I was fully prepared to come in here and kinda buck the trend and, and let's go B and let's figure it out and get these K through twos in there and, um, but I don't know how I can say that, um, as I sit here right now. I think the smartest thing to do, in my personal opinion, is to start off on Option C. And we look at the data. Um, and we make a plan on, okay, let's, we're, we're gonna have a decision in another month from now, if we're gonna start in October, September thirtieth, or whatever, whatever it is. None of these are static. We don't live in a black and white world. It's extremely gray, various shades. And I think we need to be as flexible and as, and as nimble as we can right now. Um, and when the folks that we hire to make these decisions and to run our school system are telling us, we need to go virtual, I think we, we better heed their advice. And so I'm gonna call for a roll call. And I wanna get everyone's, um, opinion on Option B or Option C as it stands right now. And, uh, we're gonna roll with it. We're gonna have another meeting here. I think it's in two weeks. So it's gonna be back on the agenda again and we're gonna talk about it and see where it's going. It's not going away. Um, and so with that, um-
What would your plan be? Like, if you're saying, let's start out virtual?
You know, if it, my plan would be B, you know. I mean, I, I, I personally feel that if the rates keep going the way they're going, I think the governor's gonna shut it down anyways. I think he's gonna make us all go virtual and we're all talking about this for notis. I'm like, oh, just kidding, uh, everybody virtual, you know, for whatever time period. Um, but, but what I would charge staff with is like, let's go virtual, but we have to make this thing tight. We have to figure out, can we have kindergarteners coming to meet their teachers um, on separate times so they, they can meet that face? Um, can we go out and meet those students that are in Green Meadows, that are on Shorty Collins Drive, that are in Leisure Lane, that are in some of our, um, you know, lower economic, um, areas? Go out and meet them where they're at. Uh, we can stay socially distanced, we can put some Wi-Fi's on the buses, we can take food, we can, we can, we can do those things to make virtual more robust. But with an eye on, we're getting back in school at some point. And so whether that's B or A or however that looks like, we have a framework right now with how we could implement getting kids back into school. And I just, I don't think it hurts that if we waited an extra four to six weeks from the August seventeenth start date to, call it October first, to see what that looks like. And if, um, that curve starts going down, um, and we start feeling more comfortable, we start, uh, we know more about how many teachers and how many students really wanna come back into that classroom, then I think we could slowly implement that. We can implement it at any time. And I think we can ramp that up as we go. We can go a third of the kids, fifty percent of the kids, and please, a hundred percent of the kids sometime soon. But, um, I, I just don't feel like I can go against these folks and, um, um, and that's where I'm at right now. So with that being said, do we have any other questions that need to be asked before I ask for your vote?
I will make one more comment. If I had the option, which we don't have because the legislature makes the rules, but if I had the option to, to do Plan A, B, or C, or delay the start of school till the middle of September, that's what I would vote.
I, I, I would too. And, and I truly believe that's what's gonna happen in the next couple of weeks, uh, with the governor's office. I think he's got, what, two more weeks in his phase two? You still see that thing rising. I don't think there's any way that he's gonna say, you're going back to seventeenth. But, you know, whatever. We, we have to play the, the hand that we're dealt right now. Um, and so we have to make a decision because we have to let parents know. Um, yes, ma'am.
And Blair, I can tell you, teachers love their kids enough that whichever way, B or C-
Gonna make it work.
They're gonna make-
They're gonna make it work. I know they are.
The kids.
Yes, ma'am.
And our staff loves the kids.
Absolutely. And with that, I'm gonna ask your, uh, vote, Ms. Case.
C.
Uh, Ms. Corn?
C.
Coach Wood?
C.
Ms. Hope?
C.
Ms. Rapture?
C.
Mr. Egoff?
B.
And I'm with C. Uh, we'd like to direct staff to go ahead and start planning on all virtual, starting from this point. Um, I want you to, uh, be prepared in the next couple of weeks to really dive into what that's gonna look like for us. I, I, this needs to be robust. I wanna know how many Chromebooks we need, what kinda hotspots? Where, how are we gonna meet these kids where they're at? We've gotta be able to meet them where they're at.
What options do we have for kindergarten kids?
You know, I think that's something that we need to, to challenge them with. We need to figure that out. Um, I, I think a, a, a smart thing might be to, um, you know, meet that teacher, very few kids at a time so they can just see him, touch him. With parents, whatever, whatever that is. Y'all figure it out.
And their, um, their school, back to school days. You know, if they can take that time, they might need gas money, whatever it is we've gotta do to make that happen.
Yeah, let's make that happen. And then don't, don't drop our Plan B, clearly. Uh, we need to keep working on that. We need to keep refining that. Um, we need to be able to, if we start seeing things go down, I wanna get kids back in school. I wanna get them in there, hopefully before the fall. August isn't the fall to me, you know? October is more, when the leaves start changing, that's fall. Um, get those kids back into school as safely as possible. Make sure that our staff is safe. Um, so we're gonna put a lot on you. Uh, but that's, that's what you're here for.
September eighth is the school board and we need to-
We do.
Lots more information.
We have, our next school board meeting is going to be, Kathy?
That's August the tenth.
August the tenth. So, uh, prior to August the tenth, you've got, uh, call it twenty days to really come up with some robust guidelines on how we're gonna do this. And I'm talking robust.
We also have August fifth with our school, our administrator visit.
Are we supposed to get that back?
I think we canceled those, didn't we? So August fifth, we're gonna be, the, the August tenth is gonna be our next board meeting. Um, uh, we'll talk about times and things of that nature later. But, um, please come with your, your best foot forward there and, um, do you have any questions of us? Thank you guys so, so, so much. I appreciate you sticking with me for this, for this long. Um,
Wow.
Uh, four hours and some change talking about one subject's, uh, a new record, I think. But, um, thank you, everyone. Appreciate it. God bless. Uh, yes, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
We adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any pews? We are adjourned.